Recording. Call a meeting to order. Oops, call it. Not calling it to order yet.
Okay. Call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, November 23rd, 2020, being conducted with Zoom technology as directed by Governor Baker's March 2020 emergency order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting? Besides us, raise your hand or make some kind of gesture using all your fingers. Thank you. Do we have minutes? We have minutes. March, I got, I have March 9th, 2020?
What's your memory, Don?
Oh, March 9th. Remember that well.
One of the presentations.
I think it's important to note that we're doing the printed minutes, but all of these have been, you know, put out for, put on, put on, recordings have been posted.
Maybe, maybe we would, we just want to approve the November 16th, which is the most current, and take the rest of them to read through a little more carefully, unless if you people feel comfortable, you can put it to a vote, but.
Pretty accurate. Oh, the old Senator Urban statement, from best my recollection, Senator. One thing you could do is that if you look at the bottom of the audit review, you might see that the auditor did say, like to see a tracking for the veterans' benefit, where I want to kick a note over to and see if has that been implemented. We've got it's a six-month window. That's what I'm saying. So if we could kick a look, we did see the recommendation from the auditor and have heard that, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of March 9th.
Any second? Right thing.
I'm going to say it tomorrow.
I'll second it.
Oh, well, I don't see a gun to our, a burning need. How about that? We say that instead. If you want to take a chance to read them, I know, and I applaud Pam for getting such a plethora of them out. If you want to say, since we have a huge thing next week, let's take the week to read them and review their.
I would prefer to read them before I vote on them.
All right. Good enough. How about, how about last week's?
Again, same thing. Didn't get a lot, a lot of chance to really look at all of them.
Okay. So next week, we'll have all these on the agenda. We'll look them over and.
Well, I mean, we're going to have, we're going to have that short, that time around Thanksgiving, around the family table to go through minutes.
And some of, occasionally there was something in red. Is it, am I supposed to interpret that some way?
Sometimes I put the time in red. Sometimes I might put a revision, the revision that the attorney made, I put it in red just so we.
So we just read it through as if it's, it goes through like it is with the red.
I did like the time thing. I remember that was a point we made back before that so people could, if they wanted to see the video part, they could correlate the two. Yeah.
The public should know that this is a priority to get caught up and then to stay caught up with minutes going forward. All right. The next item on the agenda is anything under new business, old business, is the dispatch, dispatch update. So town administrator Marklin, myself, met with the town administrator Raul and Chairman Russell last Thursday was, Thursday, to get further clarity regarding the options of consolidating with, with Wilbraham. Originally, Wilbraham was suggesting an annual fee of $125,000 plus a yearly escalation based on the, on the cost of Consumer Price Index. They now are proposing just a $125,000 annual fee for each of the five years with no escalation during the term of the contract that we agree to go with them. Westcom's assessment is $100,000 per year for the five years. And as you know, the state will pay the first three years of both of those assessments. And the fourth year, they'll pay 50%. In the fifth year, they'll pay 25%. So the first year, if we were with Westcom, for the first, so the first five years of that assessment cost for Westcom total would be $125,000. With Wilbraham, it'd be 156,250. But Westcom also has a $40,000 fee, and there's also some cost to the CAD system and this other, another system that they need to put in. The fiber optic line from Wilbraham to Hampton, we know the state has already agreed to pay for it if we sign an interminable agreement. For Westcom, there's a $30,000 fee because the fiber optic line would go from here to East Long Meadow, then hook into Westcom. And we're not sure if the state will reimburse for that, like to do for Wilbraham. So we agreed that we would meet again today, which we did. And Bob submitted to them a draft IMA based on the agreement that the town had with East Long Meadow before that fell apart. And we met with them again today, and they didn't seem to have any serious objection to that, if I'm correct, Bob, to that IMA, and that they would bring it to their board and look at it. I told them that we'd like to do is, on November 30th, to move this along is to make some type of decision, at least to see what direction we want to go. And do we want, do we want to just forget about it altogether? Do we want to still pursue Westcom, or we just want to pursue Wilbraham, or we want to do something else? So because each of us has to move this along. They also requested that we have a joint board meeting, the two boards of selectmen, to discuss not only this, what our decision is going to be, but also to discuss some other issues that they're, that they're interested in, such as the public health nurse, the public health agent, the public health agent, and in, what else do we talk about? Conservation agent potentially, although then we may already settled that. We would, you know, so, so that would be on December 21st, 21st, right? And we would meet with them to really discuss a number of issues that pertain to the, the both, both boards and both towns. So that's where we are. It's the update.
Well, I, I did some looking into various things and specifically relative to Westcom. And I learned that they have two vacancies with dispatchers. Two vacancies for dispatchers. It doesn't seem to be working.
Closer?
They have two vacancies. Can you hear me, Ted? They have two vacancies for dispatchers.
Speak closer to the mic.
Okay. They have two vacancies for dispatchers, and which, they have said before that they would interview Hampton's dispatchers, should we go that route? That the, what was interesting to learn for me was that when the allocation from 911 monies goes out, it goes out first to the regionalized dispatch centers. And then if there is money left over, it goes to new endeavors. So you have no way of knowing, and so the new people go to the end of the queue. And so you have no way of knowing if that funding will come through or if reimbursements will come through. So there is a risk involved in that. Many times it does, and many times it doesn't. So, you know, they're unsure about that part of it. The Hampton, Wilbraham, if it became a unit, could never become a dispatch region because we don't have enough call volume. So this, the feeling was that the state, this is what I'm getting, the feeling was that the state would come in and say, you, Hampton, Wilbraham, you have to join somebody else, because you, somebody can't join you because you're not large enough to take on new, new people. The other point that I learned was that I thought they had two dispatchers for every shift, but they really only have one on the 12 o'clock shift. So there's, there's a discrepancy there. That's what, that's what I found out. And the other part that I had was that Westcom is presently looking for a national, looking into achieving national accreditation. And they want, and they wondered if, excuse me, and they wondered if, I would wonder if Wilbraham is doing the same. National accreditation does not, says that you've met a certain standard of performance and of professionalism, and it's something that people are seeking now to differentiate themselves in the field of many people that are doing dispatch. So there are a number of issues. I think also there's a concern with the warrant article that was submitted relative to this issue and how, how we, how we would handle that. And it seems to me that having the, a decision for November 30th, although I like having decisions be timely, doesn't take into account the 135 people that signed that petition and that said that they wanted to have a more broad discussion, which we would have done had we not had COVID and had, we would have had public forums and whatever. But so I guess at this point, I would like to make a motion at the board table, any decision on dispatch until it can make a public presentation of, of the available options at the next town meeting. And this would give, so I, I make that motion, I'll stop right there, and I'll tell you why. So my motion is, I moved at the board table, any decision on dispatch services until it can make a public presentation on the available options at a town meeting.
Why, why can't we make a presentation at any time?
Why can't, pardon me, I didn't hear you say that. Why can't we have a presentation?
Why couldn't we do a Zoom, Zoom format?
We'd have to wait for the presentation to go over. We couldn't submit a budget. We wouldn't have published the budget, and therefore it wouldn't be effective for that fiscal year.
Well, I think, I think that the reason that we wouldn't do Zoom is you don't get the same response from Zoom, and it's a different, different group of people, I think. We, the first decision, when we didn't make a decision on dispatch, you'll recall, was Zoomed, and there were six or eight or 10, I don't know how many, but not, not hundreds, certainly, of people that attended. And I didn't get the same sense of the community that I got at, at a town meeting. So that was the, was the difference between Zoom and town meeting. Town meeting itself, I got, I got your point, and your point.
Is the logistics of it.
Is, is the logistics of it. And I think that there is not an imminence to have this decision made today, since it's been, been discussed for years. So, I mean, while it might be, mean greater savings, you know, because you have one more year of, you'd be, you'd have the first year under your belt, I don't think it's that important. I think it's more important to listen to the public and to say, what are these people's concerns? And let them raise their concerns. We may not be turned by, whatever the word is, we may not change our opinions because of their concerns, but I'd like to hear from them and see why they're so concerned.
Well, we know what their concerns are.
Well, I don't know their concerns.
Their concerns are if we go to Westcom, we won't get the service that we get from our current dispatchers. Their concern is if we go to Westcom, there'll be a delay in the response time. There'll be delay, there'll be lay in, the delay in response time. Their concern that dispatchers in Westcom do not, dispatchers in Westcom do not provide the service that our dispatchers do, and they, they frame it as backup our police officers or fire department. Their concern that we don't save enough money, that it's only $12 per household per month.
Or something like that.
Which is $329,000 a year, when you add up all the households, but they decide the point. That's their concern. Their concern that, you know, we, we haven't looked into the police negotiation, how much the police department is going to cost. They're concerned about losing autonomy. You've expressed concern that Wilbraham will, will become South Wilbraham. So we know the concerns, and we've discussed this, you know, we've looked at all these things. They, their, there's, they're, in their petition, they suggest that we act aggressively, pursue other towns to join with us. And that's nice, but reality, how would that occur? Because I don't see other towns wanting to join with the smallest town. And as you found out.
The re, the regional question is.
The regional question arises, that you really can't do, because they're not big enough to do it.
Exactly.
In addition to that, that the people who are left that aren't regionalized are, you know, Springfield, Holyoke, Agawam, West Springfield, and some, you know, smaller towns. So I, I think we know the concerns. I think we know the financial costs. I think we know the, the pros and the cons, the pros for it. Of course, we're going to save a lot, we would save a lot of money. We still have good dispatch service. We would have 24-hour service. I'm a little bit surprised, they don't have someone on it at midnight, but that's.
They have one. But two on the others, from what I understand.
So, I mean, I think those are the issues that we've talked about and tried to, tried to, there's an issue of redundancy. What happens if the system goes down? Most of the contracts have a backup in the system that says that the local town has to be responsible for that. And Wilbraham, I know that they're concerned about redundancy too, so they, having their IT people look at how you would do that, so that's just a backup, if this one, one of the twelve systems go down. So I, I don't know.
I guess, I guess I'm not particularly, I, I don't think having, having a meeting with these people or whoever wanted to go would change our mind. I mean, I do think we have gathered a lot of, a lot of information, and, and you certainly have done more than enough to try to see that all the facts are on the table and that, you know, everybody could look at them and whatever. I think it just gives these people who have signed this the opportunity to speak it themselves, which I think in the, in the name of transparency is a nice thing to have, because you never trust anybody does it as well as you would do it. So they, you know, they, they would think that they'd express it better than I would express it, or you would express it. So I think that that's the purpose of having the meeting with them, or having some kind of a forum or something. I think it's, 135 people is a lot of people to take a position, and it seems to me that we ought to respect them.
Well, if we don't respect them, is this.
Or respect their position, you know, not personally.
I respect their position, I respect their position that they're opposed to, to changing the dispatch. Our position is that if we have a chance to save the town, a million and a half dollars over five years, we should take advantage of that. Now, you said yourself.
Did you hear from them that they were opposed to, to just changing dispatch? Or that they just wanted to discuss it and get more information?
Well, what they, what they said is that, what they've said is that they want us to look through other alternatives.
Right.
They said that they don't want it to move out of town. I mean, we can read the petition.
Yeah, I did read the petition.
You know? I mean, they're free to discuss. Well, I guess the, I guess, I guess the issue is, I don't know much more, what more information we can get. They clearly on Facebook expressed their opinion. They can write letters. Jim Smith expressed his opinion and the other address's opinion. We've heard their opinion from before, from the other Westcom meeting, when we were talking about that. We know your position is you'll never do anything with Wilbraham. So that's out of the question. So where does that leave us? You know, over a course of five years, we're talking, it's 400, in, in, next year's going to be $478,000. By the end of five years, our cost for dispatch is going to be $500 and something thousand.
One point of perspective, and you talked about smaller, other towns coming to Hampton. We did look at the East Long Meadow thing. They wanted to come to us, in my recollection, is because they don't do dispatch. They didn't have dispatchers. Their officers actually perform dispatch, so it was prudent for them to basically take advantage of our pre-existing dispatch situation. I don't know of another town in this area that would really fall for that type of thing. I think I've said before in meetings that I did see any perspective merging with Wilbraham as analogous to raindrops, if you will, that we're going to be a couple of raindrops merging together, but at some point, the state is going to push us into bigger groups, as I think Don just talked about, and I think Mary Ellen, you said that's a bit of the state's goal. You get a couple of smaller groups, and down the road, whatever, the hammer comes, the carrot comes, whatever comes, they really want to. And you've seen some of the ones that Donna's presented, much greater, anywhere with five, seven. Look at Berkshire, what are they, 20-something communities?
Right.
That's obviously their goal down the road. Are we better off by taking a bit of a baby step and seeing what it's like for us with a community where we think that there's some, as you said before, concern about lack of local knowledge by the Westcon alternative would be somewhat mitigated by going to Wilbraham? It does come down a bit to what Don talked about. It is money. You know, we have a chance.
I, I do, I do have, I do have a concern that if they give the money to the region first, and then it's what's left over can go to new people, whether there, and sometimes there is not money left over. So we don't really know for, for a firm thing. Even, even the money for the fiber optics is not a firm thing. It's, if there's money available, you know, you, you're entitled to apply for that money, but it's not a firm thing. So I, that is a concern also, that the figures we're using may or may not come to be, that we're taking, we're keeping our fingers crossed and hoping that the state, you know, will live up to its word, or will have enough money to live up to its word, whatever.
Well, perhaps that's something that could be worked on in the agreement, that some of the numbers are predicated on the state reimbursement as well. Because I think their municipal officials, their understanding that sometimes they've lived through where the cherry sheet wasn't totally fulfilled, and sometimes things happen. So perhaps that's an opportunity for something like that. But I think it does go back to where we've had concerns expressed to us. Are we being penny wise and pound foolish? Unfortunately, it is our decision. I do think logistically, though, by waiting to town meeting, it really ties our hands. We can't provide a full budget analysis. Is there an opportunity for a presentation in January or February, like a normal budget presentation? Perhaps. You know, Don does have an opportunity coming forward for a joint meeting with Wilbraham or Selectmen, so that does allow us to flush it out a bit. But I think waiting for town meeting just kicks the key in down the road again. There's, at that point, if you're waiting for that, how do you, you don't do your due diligence in presenting the full budget for consideration? Because it's like you're getting it.
Twice, too, because that's changed. So, you know, I mean, what you learned last year isn't the same issue.
To your, to your issue of if the state doesn't fund us, the state says, look, there's no money, right? If we go to, if we go to Westcom, it's $100,000, right? We would have to pay $100,000. The state is supposed to pick that up, but we would have to pay it if, if they don't fund it.
Well, no, because they would fund the region first, so they, they would fund that region.
So they would fund the $100,000.
They know they're going to get funded.
Okay. So let's say we decide.
They don't know how much extra money they're going to get.
Okay. So let's, let's say they decide, we decide to go to Wilbraham. It's $125,000. That's still less than $447,000, you know? Even if we had to pay the full boat, whereas they're saying we would have to pay zero for the first three years if the funding is there. The question is asked, someone's asking, who's funding the fiber optic from Westcom? Originally, we, the $30,000 was to be paid by us, I believe, originally, but we don't know if the state will pick that up now. The, the state has agreed, if we sign with Wilbraham, that they'll pick up the cost of the fiber optic line from us to Wilbraham.
If the money's there.
If the money's there. So there's a motion. There's been no second as of yet. Your motion again, Mariel.
I moved at the board table, any decision on dispatch services until it can make a public presentation on the available options at a town meeting.
Do you have a second?
You know, what I'm thinking, though, does it have to be the, the spring town meeting? Can you have another town meeting? You got to have a special town meeting, right? So you could, you could conceivably, you wouldn't have to necessarily wait till May. You could conceivably say, okay, we're going to have, just like we would do a Zoom meeting, we're going to have a town meeting at, whatever. I don't know if that would be a purpose to that.
Right. Why wouldn't that be different than just having like the ambulance forum we had before?
Right. That's what I, that's what I had said before.
Until, basically, until we've had a public presentation prior to town meeting, that would be something that would be more, I think, again, in terms of working out, there's a budget sequence to happen. Different departments have to have their numbers together. And I think if you're looking for tabling this until the board has an opportunity to make a public presentation at a public forum in whatever mode is available, because honestly, we don't know what's going to be happening. There's no guarantee next year's town meeting is live, honestly. Don, is there a third wave coming? No.
Well, you know, there's no second, there's no second. I just think that it's, it's respectful for people that, if people have gone to the effort of doing, of doing a petition and getting 135 people to, to agree with their position on it, it's respectful to listen to them. And, and how that happens, I don't know, you know, how it happens in a, in a respectful way, but I do know that it's good to have people involved, even if they never agree with us.
The only thing I can say again is that we know what their petition says, that's their position. We know what they said when we were talking about Westcom. We've, I, at least I read the Facebook blogs of the concern. Some people have sent letters. We try to be as forthcoming as possible where we are, each of our meetings and how much and cost and all that stuff. We'll do, you know, probably do another round of costing out for next week, and we'll, we'll discuss it again next week.
Okay. And for next week, you said that the, the decision would be to either.
Well, I would, I would hope, and I would have hoped, and that the option would be, we, we decide whether to do nothing, stay the way we are, if you got Fisher Cup, you know, stay the way we are, pursue Westcom, or pursue Wilbraham, or, I don't know, if the regional dispatch fairy drops a tone on us, you know, look, take a look at that. All right? Anything else?
No, I'm willing to, I would say, I'm willing to explore the public forum. I think we got a lot of great answers and play from the ambulance slash transfer public information group, whichever. I think that's, that's what we should be targeting towards, not hamstringing the budget process for two years by requiring it to be at a town, at the annual town meeting. So we want to retool, retool that, think about that and retool the motion, then maybe that's where we should go. And you'd like, you'd like to have a public session where people can present their concerns or answers by the board? That's, I guess, prudent. It's awfully difficult to do. We'd be doing it in the auditorium if we weren't unzoned, yeah? Right? This would have been handled weeks ago.
Right. Exactly. So we, I did, I did recognize that COVID has.
Right. So we explored that type of thing, i.e. sitting at the cafeteria, we're up, everybody spaced, having an opportunity to bring something out quickly in the next couple of weeks, and that's something to.
Okay. So we'll think about that. We're going to talk, discuss this next week anyway.
Yes. Right. Thank you, Mariel. Next item on the agenda is an update on the capital planning process.
So far, so basically, we have sent a note out, and we've got a kind of a consensus about a meeting date, and it will be virtual, believe it or not. Bob has set up a Zoom meeting for tomorrow afternoon. I think notice has gone out to everybody on the committee, and we'll have a report for you after the holiday of progress. We're going to take a look at our different tasks, our different roles. We have some people who have expressed interest in joining the committee, and we'll get a sentence report back to the board if we have a need for additional membership. Getting it too large makes you pretty unwieldy, I think.
I think by the same token, if you're going to add any, you should add all, unless you have a real reason for, for excluding somebody. You know what I mean? I think that if the committee, if it doesn't, it's not 30 people, obviously, but if, I know of two that have submitted letters, and you mentioned another person that's going to be new on it, I think, as I understood.
That one we talked about months ago, but.
What, whatever, he's still a new person.
Letters, I haven't seen any letters.
Well, they, I think they sent them to both Don and Mr. Merkel. Oh. Did you send them to Mr. Merkel? Letter, you didn't get emails from, from Donna Hatch and Lisa Sternberg?
Oh, I got, I'm sorry, no letters, but I got a phone call.
Well, I, maybe a letter was, was misstated.
I'm sorry, no. I have an email from Sternberg and an email from Donna Hatch.
Well. Well, I, I think again, when you, if you're asking for people to volunteer, when they come forward and volunteer, you should engage them and have them participate. And I don't think two more people would, would hinder the progress of the group at all.
And as I shared with the board before, we may have some people that are, again, not able to continue. So like I said, we'll explore the, where we are with the board and come back to the board selectmen with recommendations.
All right, uh, ambulance contract update.
Uh, I would ask the board to pass over this, uh, tonight and we'll have it completed for you, uh, on the 30th. Uh, the ambulance oversight committee reviewed, uh, the quarterly report. Uh, one of the members of the committee, uh, suggested that we go through the contract paragraph by paragraph to ensure that, uh, action ambulance was in compliance. Uh, subsequently, we did that. Uh, there was some question about insurance. Uh, that question has just been resolved today. And, uh, a phone call with, uh, Ms. Hatch, uh, who actually, uh, made that suggestion. And we did go through the contract. Uh, we agreed that we would postpone it for a week just to make sure that all the loose ends are tied up. There will not be any significant substantive changes in the contract. We are changing police chief to fire chief. And then I've added a sentence there that if the fire chief is unavailable, the backup will be the police chief. And if unavailable, the backup will be the town administrator. So we have a, a three tiered structure there that I've added. And that's the only significant change. Also, the company does not work with subcontractors. And in one section, there are rules for working with subcontractors. In another section, it says they may not be permitted to work with subcontractors. So I just, we took out a paragraph there that had to do with subcontractors. We made a, a modification to the clause on the corn, Cory checks, that's it. But I would, you know, we agreed this afternoon that let's, uh, bring this back in a week for, for an update signature.
Well, I want to appreciate that people are going through the contracts because I know when I read these contracts, I glaze over and don't remember. I'm page four.
I've done the third word.
I've done the third word, I'm going, and so I, I think it's a good exercise.
It's a good exercise to make sure that there is compliance. And the long and the short of it is, there is compliance, so.
How many more calls do we have right now? Roughly coming up to halfway through the year. What was that number we had to get to, Don? 330?
Yep. We got to get to 330.
330. Um, I don't have a number of calls. I do know that we are still off 30%. That's not just here, that's statewide. It was up as high as 49% during the height of the first COVID spike.
You mean our calls are under 30%?
Yes, apparently with the COVID pandemic, people are reluctant to go to the hospital. They won't go. And so calls to take, for an ambulance to take people to the hospital are, are off. There's a fear that you're going to catch it in the hospital, which I suppose is reasonable.
So maybe that's for the COVID. Sorry, we don't.
Reimbursement.
Anything else on that? Uh, just by way of update, cause some people have asked, a third Virge of school Saturday night. Uh, it appears that someone tried to climb on the roof to do that thing, went to where the gas meter was, stepped on the gas meter and broke the high pressure hose. High pressure on a fueling propane gas, the natural gas. Loud noise, the gas was spread throughout the neighborhood. The fire department had resourced, the police department responded. Uh, they capped it from the, they had to cap it from the street. There, there were concerns, safety concerns, that if they did it at the school. So they, they closed it from the street, they repaired the, the damage. Uh, the fire department, uh, went in and vented all the rooms. Some of the gas was, uh, stuck in, stuck above the, uh, the drop ceiling. And they opened up those panels and cleaned out that. So that was Saturday night, good job by them and the fire department and everyone on the scene. I have two, uh, so let's please vote these cultural council.
Yes, please. Um, we're coming up to the point where we have to review grant applications and two of the numbers prior to passing.
After they're built, passed, passed their term.
Yes.
Pass on.
And when, and when is the cultural council, how, what is your function?
Well, the town gets about $3,500 a year from the state funds and, uh, schools, local performers and people from the hill towns and wherever, everybody submits the applications. And the group six and wins all of them and determines how much money is going to be given out. Yeah, it's a, it's a nice program.
They've been, uh, they've dispersed to the library on occasion.
There was something different in schools, I, I didn't know where it was down.
I know some of those, you know, things to take.
Yeah, they bring like poetry readers.
Who are the current Don members at this point?
Diane Mathi, myself, Holly, Barbara Quinn, and we are looking for snowmills at this point.
Okay, so these are just re-upping?
We can't sign if we haven't voted.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve reappointment of the cultural council people, still next year.
Oh, in fact, oh, the names are.
The names are Holly Tuttle and Barbara Quinn.
Motion is made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye. Well, that was contentious.
Sure. Anything else to come before the board?
I have a couple of items.
Oh, excuse me, town administration report.
Well, we've already gone through several of these items, including, uh, the conferences with Wilbraham, the update of the ambulance contract, uh, the IMA draft. A DUA fraud continues statewide and it affects the town of Hampden. That is the Division of Unemployment Assistance. Uh, there is a group who are, uh, attempting to scam the state unemployment system. What they do is they manage to put name, a phony name, uh, on the list to be, uh, given unemployment compensation. And, um, so I, I try to keep track of that, um, but it continues. And apparently the DUA hasn't found a way to stop it. So I, I assume that the name of the game is to get a name on there, get, get it approved. Uh, and then to collect, somehow to collect the amount of unemployment comp that is due.
Is it the Russians, Tom?
Could be the Russians, maybe the Chinese.
Well, when you get to Washington, I want you to work on that, all right?
All right. Uh, we did have a meeting with the highway superintendent, uh, the architect Larry Tuttle, uh, Selectman Flynn and myself, uh, on November the 17th to review the highway garage expansion project. Uh, there'll be more to come on that. The result, the upshot is likely to be some modification of the design and perhaps a request to the town meeting for additional, uh, funding. Uh, would the board agree to, for me to approve, uh, repair of the well tank at Academy Hall? You must have seen those pictures that Mark sent out.
I'm not sure they really need to come for the board for, you know, when you fix.
Okay, sure, all right, okay. Um, also, uh, the regional school district has delayed using CARES Act funding. Uh, as you know, the town agreed to pay one fourth of what, uh, Wilbraham pays.
Can we, um, let's add that to the agenda for the, I hate to say it, Don, the meeting with Wilbraham. If there's some time. Okay, we should be in lockup. We should have the same concerns they have.
Yeah, they, their concerns.
Well, Wilbraham is.
Wilbraham is holding off.
Yeah, so.
Their concerns.
Let's talk to them about it, make sure we're on the same page.
They're concerned it's not reimbursable, so. I believe it is. And lastly, uh, our municipal vulnerability project, uh, is underway. There'll be a meeting on December the 16th to do a watershed assessment. Uh, I've been asked to put together, uh, a town group consisting of a member of the planning board, a member of the conservation commission, the emergency management director and I guess myself. And what, what's going on here is that they're going to prepare a plan uh, for the townwide plan to address vulnerabilities to weather. Um, with a focus on East Main Street, where Big Brook and East Brook flow into the Scantic River and where there's been extensive flooding in the past. They will do a plan. The plan will be completed by April. And then we will then be eligible to apply for a state grant uh, to address the culverts and the other, uh, structural problems up there that, uh, result in flooding during severe weather.
It does a safe way of covering the entire cost?
Yes, or the town's not paying, paying a penny on this.
On the research part, not there to work. No, not for repair.
It's going to be.
We'll ask for a grant, but there, there may be some kind of sharing on that. That's, uh, my report.
Still no word from Washington, huh?
No word from Washington.
Secretary of State.
Sorry, Bob.
I've lived in Washington two summers, let me tell you. It's an awful place.
Is, all right. Is, um, so next week we have dispatch, updating your capital planning meeting. The ambulance contract, um, the minutes, all those minutes, we need to do those.
Since we have the meeting with the advisor on the 7th, that we'll be at our game plan together.
Advisory.
Pre, pre-planning, if you will.
Right. Yeah.
Who's writing on the.
Anything else?
Who's writing on the.
No, but I, I would just, um, now that we're up to date on minutes, maybe beside the, the meeting minutes, we can put the date of the minutes that are going to be presented, you know what I mean here? Because that's a way for me to check back, you know, now that we're on, now that we're up to date, you say 11:27, 11:30.
It's, it's tough because the agenda's done so far in advance, you know, you don't know which one. They'd be in the recap.
So because of.
I did send them out earlier.
Yeah, she did, I saw it.
Sunday.
I think we saw some Sunday.
But because of the holiday this week, I'm going to have to file, we're going to have to file the agenda tomorrow. So I have dispatch, ambulance contract minutes and also the exec session. All right, that's it.
Session divided, right, right.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, what our goals so steep are, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone. Safe one.